May 1st meeting of the Easthamfield Township Board of Supervisors. Tonight's meeting has been advertised to be held in person and online using Zoom, with login and call-in information posted on our website. A meeting will be conducted by the chairman, who will be assisted by an employee managing the Zoom site. Tonight's video and audio is being recorded and Robert's rules apply. To offer comment, you must be recognized by the chairman. For people utilizing Zoom, please use the chat function to be recognized. Text your name and address to the moderator. Your request to speak will then be passed on by staff to the chairman to be recognized. Once recognized by the chairman, unmute your microphone and after speaking, please mute your microphone. Easthamfield Township's public comment rules will apply for all public comment. You must be a resident or business owner in the township to speak. You must identify yourself by name and address before speaking and sign the guest log for meeting minute purposes, or follow the chat procedure that's been outlined previously. Comment is limited to three minutes and must be about the agenda item being discussed, with the exception of public comment when non-agenda items can be addressed. No action will be taken on any non-agenda item of a non-emergency nature during the public comment period for non-agenda items. We will now move on to our first agenda item. Please join me for a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance. The pledge.
We pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, our first agenda item up for consideration this evening is our consent agenda. The consent agenda addresses the approval of routine and repetitive business matters that tend to need little or no review, discussion, or deliberation. Consent agenda items are provided to all board members for review in advance of our meeting. Is there any comment on the consent agenda from the board?
I have none.
No? And how about from the audience here tonight? Okay, seeing none, I'll consider a motion to approve our consent agenda.
So moved.
I have a motion from Mr. Wigglesworth. Do I hear a second?
A second.
Second from Mr. Johnson. I have a motion from Mr. Wigglesworth, a second from Mr. Johnson. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes four zero. Okay. Next up on the agenda is our action items. All right, the first action item for review are amendments to our zoning ordinances. Mrs. Schweitzer, do you want to just comment here?
So we have three proposed amendments to our zoning ordinance, and then following that in item B is also an amendment to our subdivision land development ordinance. The first one is the campus zone. We'd like to include a resident density in that zone, so that draft will accomplish that, as well as incidental modifications to the incidental uses. The buffer planting, we've been advised by our engineer that our buffer planting is not conducive to long-term maintenance of that area. They kind of snuff all the plantings out because they're so tight. So what we did was modify that in terms of, instead of three options, we now have two options, and they're a lot more open, so they allow the trees and the shrubs to grow properly. And the third one is signage. It's simply a change, not change, it's a correction to the village commercial zone, which is the VC zone, to correct the signage issue. These, then the amendment to the subdivision ordinance is the buffer planting is in conjunction with what I just described with the buffer planting for the zoning ordinance. What our staff is asking for, to be authorized to do, is to submit these to the Lancaster County and Township Planning Commissions for review and comment, and then they'll become back to you after advertising for formal adoption consideration.
Okay, thank you. Any comment from the board on these changes?
I have none.
No.
Okay, hearing none, any comments from the audience? Okay, hearing none, hearing none, I'll, if I can find my sheet, here we go. On the amendment to the zoning ordinance, a motion to authorize staff to submit the following draft zoning ordinance amendments to the planning commissions for review. Campus zone, buffer planting, and signage. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Motion from Mr. Brubaker, do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a second from Mr. Johnson. I have a motion from Mr. Brubaker, a second from Mr. Johnson. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes four zero. Okay, on the amendment to the subdivision and land development, a motion to authorize staff to submit the following draft subdivision and land development ordinance amendment to the planning commissions for review, buffer planning. Do I, any questions concerning this one? Hearing none, anything from the audience? Don't see or hear anything there either? Okay, I'll accept the motion to, on this amendment, to the subdivision and land development plan.
So moved.
Motion from Mr. Johnson, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Wigglesworth. A motion from Mr. Johnson, a second from Mr. Wigglesworth. All those in favors, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes four zero. Thank you. Next up, we have a project near and dear to my heart, Amos Hur Phase Two. Mrs. Schweitzer.
Amos Hur Phase Two has been with us for a couple of months, maybe almost a year. We started this project, it's a second phase to Amos Hur, started at $380,000. After the bids came in, it ended up being eight hundred and, where are we at? Eight hundred and one dollars, something like that? Eight hundred and one thousand. We got bids, we rejected bids, we then got a bid through Gordian at Lowbar, which is very similar to the other ones. They are a Keystone Network provider, so we didn't have to go out again for public bids. This project consists of a pavilion, covered bocce courts, that's two courts, and expanded parking and stonewalled facilities.
Okay, any comment from the board?
I would say it's needed improvements on the way in. We had a full park, and it was great to see all the facilities being used, and I expect all these improvements soon be, being used as well. And Mr. Bennett, I'm happy for you, because I know you've championed this for quite a while, and I'm glad to see it come together for you.
For the benefit of the audience as well, I noted that it ended at $800,000. That is fully funded through grants.
Right, it's, it had no real cost to the, to our residents and taxpayers, and I-
Well, I should say that there is a match to the one grant of 280,000, but that was anticipated when we, even when we're at 380,000, so.
Given where we are on this project, where we were many hundreds of thousand dollars short on completing this project, I want to commend Mrs. Schweitzer and the staff on the job they've done to come up with the grant money on this and move this project along. I know that we'll have a lot of happy people very soon, as soon as we get this project built.
Yes.
With that, any comment from the audience?
Yes, I'd like, I'd like to make a comment too. As a new person on the Parks and Recreation Committee, I can't take any credit for getting this done. Tom just gave everybody that credit, but I'm, I'm pleased to be part of the Parks and Recreation Committee and just have this happen while I'm on the committee. Yeah, so it's, and I don't know who gets to make the fun phone call to the, to the bocce club, but they should be pretty delighted too, I think. Yeah, and is there a schedule for, for this? And the reason I ask is just knowing how busy it is in July out there, you know, it's a lot of kids.
I'll sign the contract and get it to them tomorrow, and then they'll give me a schedule. They're aware that it's coming, but it depends on their work schedule. I believe the project itself will take five to six weeks to complete, once they get in here.
But that's the entire project?
Yes.
The bocce could take less time, or the second pavilion, you know?
Yeah, I mean, we can ask them to start that first, but they probably have a process in terms of concrete pouring and things of that nature.
Right, okay.
Is there any attempt to work around when the park's the busiest with kids all over the place, or?
It's, they'll just coordinate off and do what they have to do.
And Hark's aware that it's coming for their summer playground program, which is our primary user over the summer during Business Day, so. They yell at everybody else for it. Summer Playground through Hark is aware, so I think we'll be, we'll be all right working together over the summer.
Okay.
Very good.
And Mr. Johnson, just a suggestion, I pay credit where you can. You don't have any opportunities to get credit on some, on some of these projects, so we appreciate all the work you're doing on the Recreation Committee.
Thank you.
Any comment from the audience? Nothing? All right, with that, I'll have, I'll hear a motion to authorize entering into a contract with Gordian Lowbar Associates Construction to complete the pavilion, bocce courts, and expanded parking at A. Hur Park, Phase Two, for a total cost of $572,531.43.
So moved.
Motion from Mr. Johnson, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Brubaker. A motion from Mr. Johnson, a second from Mr. Brubaker. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes four zero. Okay, next, next up is consideration of some motions concerning Church and Nolt Track, the sod farm. Mrs. Schweitzer, brief overview?
So the, I've been in contact with Hummer Turf, as you know, they wanted to get released from the contract, which wouldn't happen until August of 2025. So we negotiated, and they came back and agreed to an $8,000 buyout, effective as of today, if you make a motion. And then I've also reached out to Stoner Farm. We have a long-term relationship with that farmer, and he has agreed to lease it on an annual basis for $1,000 a year. The remaining sod that is out there that Hummer is leaving behind, it's about 19 acres, will remain and be mowed by the township.
So, a thousand a year?
Yes.
That's correct?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions from the board? And any questions from the audience? All right, seeing none, I'll hear a motion to release Hummer Turf from-
There was a question.
There was a genuine question? Okay.
Mrs. Clark has.
Go ahead.
Hi, hi everyone, Patty Clark, 3337 Cochran Drive. So with the lease, with the Stoner Farm, would that, I mean, will that continue on an annual basis? I do understand that with the Hummer Farm, it was until August of 2025, so is the expectation that the Stoner lease would just go until that time period? Or will it continue beyond that? And if it continues beyond that, what is the process for ending the lease with the Stoner Farm? Would it require advanced notice, similar to the Hummer contract, like an 18-month advance notice?
That is not part of the lease arrangement. It's simply a mutual agreement that they would cease, we would cease stopping the crop farming. We've, of course, worked with Mr. Stoner in terms of getting his crop off the land, which is probably just a seasonal thing, as opposed to turf, which takes longer to mature. So it's simply just an annual lease. If we at the end, in January of next year, decide that we don't want to continue it, we will advise Mr. Stoner, and then mutually agree to not have him plant. I think once he plants, then our obligation is to allow him to get his, his crop off.
But it is a short, it is a short-term lease that can, that can end really at any time?
Yes.
Okay, to be clear.
And Mrs. Schweitzer too, this is right, kind of new, right? Hummers just bought a farm.
Yes.
They're moving their operation, so it's kind of, this is short notice, probably the best-case scenario. I do remember when the Hummers entered into the lease arrangement originally, I think it was put out for bids, and at least a few times, the township over the years actually took bids on that land for farming. And I don't know if that's something we want to entertain or not next year.
That predates me, it's always been Hummer. We could, but because this is such a, potentially a short-term process, and because of the relationship we have with Mr. Stoner.
Sure.
That's what he pays us for the Nisley Road Track farming.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, you bet.
Well, one more question about that, like where it says grass condition to remain. So do people right now use that for, you know, soccer fields? I mean, not formal soccer fields, but just recreational? And are they allowed to, and should they, and can they?
Hummer has always allowed them to be on the turf as long as they didn't destroy anything. They would walk their dogs, play ball with their dogs or kids, shoot rockets even. They always use that, those fields unofficially, because he allowed them to do that.
So it sounds like no change to instruct the community, now you can do this, now you should, and it's pretty much the same.
I mean, there's no parking essentially over there, so it's just be locals. But yeah, no change.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, with that, I'll hear a motion to, on the sod farm and Stoner Farm use of the land. A motion to release Hummer Turf from their lease of the sod farm effective May 1st with a buyout lump sum payment to the township in the amount of $8,000. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Motion from Mr. Wigglesworth, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Johnson. Motion from Mr. Wigglesworth, a second from Mr. Johnson. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passes four zero. A motion to enter into an annual lease with the Stoner Farm to crop farm approximately 28 acres of the sod farm property at the corner of Church and Nolt. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Motion from Mr. Wigglesworth, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Brubaker. A motion from Mr. Wigglesworth, a second from Mr. Brubaker. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you. Okay, next up, we're looking at the Farmdale Project Contract with JVI. Mrs. Schweitzer.
So the Farmingdale Project, which involved the intersection of Marietta and Good, Orville and Good, and Farmingdale and Orville, is essentially completed with the exception of a punch list. And what I'm looking for the board is authorization to begin the closure of that contract after they've satisfied all of the punch list items. There was debate about on council, or the board, if they decided to keep the project open for changes potentially at Orville and Farmingdale. I think we're beyond that now, and the contractor has asked for closure. We're holding about 75,000 on his contract.
Okay, any, any comment from the board?
No, I think it's fair for us to close it out.
Agreed.
Bob?
So, is this related to other things that, that could happen at the Farmingdale-Orville road intersection?
Well, we, we held it open for the potential of widening the curve, the interior curve at Orville and Farmingdale. And it's my understanding that that's not being considered anymore, therefore there's no reason to keep it open. That's not to say that we can't come back as a township and do something at that intersection, whether it be widening or whatever.
In the interest of transparency, I think there's a, there's a real possibility that we'll come back and take a, take a look at that intersection again. But on this project, for this contractor, the fair thing to do will be to close out this contract, and then if we do something later, we'll bring them back and we'll have another contract with them, if that's what's required.
So in essence, they've completed the scope of their-
Yes.
-contract, and that, and this would finalize that? Yeah, I would agree with that.
Okay, any questions, or any questions from the audience tonight?
Can you pull the mic down, please, Mr.? JVI. It's the name of the contractor for the job. The paving, the curb and sidewalk, et cetera. Can you pull the mic? Can you pull them, there you go.
Where's Orville?
Off of Good, between Good and Farmingdale.
Oh, 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 oh. Okay, Farmingdale, okay, that's that problem area we've had for years. I was getting confused.
We made some, we made some modifications there based on the, the shopping center that went in, out there.
Can I go back to the Hummer thing? Are we just renting out to get revenue, or we don't want to leave it completely open, or what?
It's better to have a crop in the ground to use the, use the ground, rather than let the, just be dirt. It would be dirt otherwise.
Why is that?
Well, because the Hummer upon exit will take the grass out, and then it'll be dirt.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so that's all, that's all we'll have.
Oh, we don't want that.
No, we don't want that.
Right, thanks.
Okay. Any comment on the Farmingdale Project from the audience? Okay, hearing none, I'll accept the motion to authorize staff to work through the punch list for this project and the eventual closure of the contract with JVI. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Motion from Mr. Brubaker, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Johnson. Motion from Mr. Brubaker, a second from Mr. Johnson. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passes four zero. Okay, next up, we have the Bar Boulevard's temporary speed bump, hump consideration. Mrs. Schweitzer.
So we removed the temporary speed hump that was in place at, on Bar Boulevard. It was one of four. Three of them were permanent, and there was one temporary. We had to remove that because it was damaged over this, over the winter months. The question then was, arose, what does the township want to do? We really should either put it in permanently, or remove it altogether. A temporary should not be in place for an extended period of time. So we had a, a speed study performed in that area, and the results were average speed of 19 miles per hour, and an 85th percentile speed of 25 miles per hour. And it's a 25 mile per hour zone. So I don't clearly see the need for that fourth speed hump. That's probably contrary to the residents in the area.
Okay.
The, the temporary one was between, I think, location two and three? Can't read them. Yeah, two and three.
And I'm told the speed study was done at the point where the temporary speed bump had been previously, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Well, any comment from the board?
When I, I drove those roads, and, you know, I don't feel like I'm an expert in this, but it just didn't feel like that it was like a high-speed, high danger area, and I think the number of speed pumps there appeared to be sufficient to me. So it just, that was an impression. Experts may disagree, but I just wanted to share, driving there, it wasn't like we really need another speed hump here, or else people are going to really speed up.
Yeah, I think, I think my sense would be, I mean, speed humps sometimes are necessary evil, and I think since it, since it's been removed, the temporary one's been removed, it doesn't hap, there's none there now. We did a, we did a study, and it appears there's not a speeding problem at the moment. My, my thought would be to just keep it as it is, and it can be revisited at a future date if, if it does become a speeding problem, and residents are complaining about it on a regular basis, and it could be revisited and a speed hump possibly installed at a future date if, if needed. But for now, I, my sense would be, probably not.
And I would say I would probably agree with that. I guess, I guess the question for me is, the speed bump's not there. We would only need an authorization to put it, put it, either put it back or put it permanent, wouldn't it?
We did have a request from the resident that lives very close by. She, or they asked, he asked, when it was going to be reinstalled. So we would have to get back to them and tell them that it's not going to be. It would be easier to address that if they know that the board took action, not to put it back in.
Okay. Well, you know, to, the speed study indicates that it's not needed. So at this point, I'll hear a motion to authorize staff to not replace the temporary speed bump on Bar Boulevard.
Well, and Mr. Bennett, I just, one thought I would, I would just throw out there for you to consider. I know we are, and that doesn't have to change your motion, but I know, from my perspective, I think once we are done with all of this project and it's finalized, it would be nice to go back into that neighborhood and take an overall look at what's truly needed after we've made those improvements to Good, Marietta, and Orville, and make whatever final decision we're going to make on the intersection with Farmingdale and Orville, to have an overall view of how we're going to handle all of those speed bumps. Maybe there's just no need to make a decision tonight on this, or maybe there is, whatever you want to do on it. But I do think we should revisit everything comprehensively, once we get done with the whole project. And it seems like we're inching closer every year.
To the end of the, to the end of the project.
Yeah.
Well, I, you know, I agree with that thinking. I'll, I'll withdraw that motion and make a motion to, to table this consideration pending an overall review of the entire project at some point down the road.
I'll second that.
I have a second, I have a-
Yeah, it sounds like we're almost doing the same thing, you know, tabling it, and by tabling it, we're not reinstalling it. And so, yeah, so I can agree with that.
Okay. All right, so, so I made the motion to table. Mr. Wigglesworth has seconded the motion. Any comment? Any further comment from the board? All right, none here? Anything from the audience? All right, hearing none from the audience, I'll hear a motion. Okay.
Calling for the question.
Calling for the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 On the motion to table, the ayes have it four zero. For the record, that was a motion by Mr. Bennett and a second from Mr. Wigglesworth. Next up, Westhamfield, Easthamfield, memorandum of understanding on a DEP grant agreement. Mrs. Schweitzer.
So we have a project that's pending on, off of Nisley Road, and also off of Gloucester. We own four acres in that little cul-de-sac area off of Gloucester, and then the main portion of the property off of Nisley, between Nisley and the golf course. What's proposed is two basins. They've been looked at, designed, and we were seeking funding. We received funding from Fish and Game Commission, I believe, for $150,000. We tried for funding for- We tried for funding for the smaller of the two basins, which is the Gloucester Basin, and were denied. Fortunately, West Hemfield has stepped up and they have a DEP Growing Greener Grant. Their project came significantly under budget. They reached out to us and to DEP to see if we would be interested in using the funds for these basins because they're in the same base, same, missing the word.
Watershed.
Watershed, thank you. They're in the same watershed. DEP agreed, West Hemfield agreed, uh, they have about two hundred thirteen thousand dollars, which will cover the, uh, township porch, portion of the larger basin and the full cost of the smaller basin. And I'm seeking authorization to enter into a memorandum of understanding and also the DEP grantee agreement to keep this project moving forward. They do have to have this in place, uh, and paid for by the end of the year, so. Bit of a time crunch and we're ready to move forward as soon as we get the NPDS permit, which has been applied for already.
Awesome, all right, well, thank you to West Hemfield.
Absolutely.
Any, uh, any comment from the board?
I'd just like to reiterate the thank you, um, it's something they didn't have to do. They could have probably found some use for it some way. Maybe not, but I believe they probably could have if they wanted to and, um, I don't know, it's just good government. They did a really good job, reached out to you. And this doesn't happen every day that, uh, the municipality calls up and says, hey, can you guys use a two hundred thousand dollar grant? So, um, they really deserve a lot of credit. This is a big deal.
Yes, it is.
I think it also needs to be noted that the, the Snapperdam Road residents, uh, who have had some challenges with flooding and those sorts of things for some time, that this is, this is a piece of that whole puzzle. Albeit the first piece, but, uh, hopefully it will have some kind of an impact on them fairly, fairly quickly and, and then eventually we can finish the project on, on, uh, toward, towards Snapperdam. So, uh, that's another good, another good outcome from this, uh, ability to move forward with these two, with these two projects.
Sure is. Any other comments from the board? All right, hearing, hearing none, any comments from the audience? Hearing none.
There's Mr.
Oh. Mr. Rob?
Hand raised on Zoom.
Oh, I got you.
Sue, if you can text your name and address, please, then I can unmute you. Go ahead, you're unmuted.
Thank you, I'm sorry, I wasn't, couldn't figure out how to, how to text the information. Um, Sue Erst sprung, I live at thirty twenty-one Gloucester Street. Did I understand correctly that the entire project must be completed by year's end?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right, with that, let's move along. At this point then, I'll hear a motion to authorize signature on an MOU regarding the West Hemfield Township Growing Greener Grant for use by East Hemfield Township for the Gloucester-Nisley Basin Project.
So moved.
Motion from Mr. Wigglesworth, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Johnson, a motion from Mr. Wigglesworth, a second from Mr. Johnson. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion pass, passes four to zero with our thanks to West Hemfield. Okay, next up, we have an investment authorization, Mrs. Schweitzer.
So Finance, uh, uh, Mrs. Johnson, uh, the Director of Finance has reached out to Univest, they have a product called Elite, um, Money Market. It requires a thou- a million dollar base be kept in that pro- in that, uh, fund, but the funds are accessible throughout the year and it's based on the treasury rate. I think they're quoting five point five three as a rate, which is very good. We're, since this is a new account, uh, they require that we have authorization from the board to move forward.
Any questions from the board?
Simply a better rate of return.
Correct.
Okay, okay, on, on the money market, I mean, that's an awesome rate on the money market. Five point three five, is that what I'm reading?
Yes.
Okay, but it does require that we keep a million dollars somewhere else, right?
A million dollar balance in the money market.
In the mon- in the, in the money market? Okay. And, uh, my other thought was, and I'm sure you've looked into this, uh, the plague it rates are.
Not quite as good.
Not quite as good, that's what I thought, that's what it seemed to me too when I looked, looked them up today. Okay, well, thank you, this is a.
She's also going to be doing some CD investing with, uh, with First National Bank, who we already deal with.
Right.
So as, any idle money that the township has will be invested in higher rates. She's separating them because the CDs, of course, will be locked in probably for six months. And this, this, uh, money market will be based on the treasuries that could fluctually up and down, which we have to keep track of.
Okay, very good. Any comment from the audience concerning our investment authorization? Hearing none. I'll hear a motion to authorize staff to open an elite money market account with Univest for the purpose of investing currently idle funds of the township.
So moved.
Motion from Mr. Johnson, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Brubaker, a motion from Mr. Johnson, a second from Mr. Brubaker. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes four zero on the investment authorization. Special event approval and indemnification, Align Life Ministries. We'll go to Mrs. Garber, I bet on this, okay?
So, um, Align Life Ministries holds this annual event at the Junction Center. It is their Run Walk for Life 5K, it's held on Junction Road along the portion, um, in front of the Junction Center from Landisville Road up into, uh, Penn Township. The road closure of Junction Road is from eight forty-five AM to ten fifteen AM with the alternate routes as typical on Graystone to seventy-two and South Culbrook Road. Penn Township approved the closure and the detour, the PennDOT application was submitted and the signed indemnification form was submitted by Align Life Ministries to the township. It is staff's recommendation that the board approve Align Life Ministries' application to hold their Run Walk for Life on Junction Road on Saturday, May eleventh at twenty twenty-four. This includes the closure of Junction Road for the allotted time and permitting the chairman to sign the indemnification agreement pertaining to the same. Fire police will be utilized to manage the traffic control.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Any questions from the audience? Junction Road?
Their property backs up to the back of Hess's Auction, which is across the street from Rutz Market.
All right.
Mr. Chair Patty Clark has a question about the Align Life event.
Sure. Patty?
Hold on, I gotta unmute her.
Okay, um, just a, just a quick question about the Move for Life event and if you have any information about what, what the event is about?
We don't ask them for any of that information and, I mean, typically Align Life Ministries is a pregnancy aid center, I believe. So I would imagine that it's for donations toward their services that they provide.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, with that, I'll hear a motion to authorize Align Life Ministries to use Junction Road between Landisville and Auction Roads on May the eleventh, two thousand twenty-four from eight forty-five to ten fifteen and to authorize the chairman to sign the roadway indemnification agreement. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Motion from Mr. Wigglesworth, do I hear a second? Second from the chair. Motion from Mr. Wigglesworth, a second from the chair, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes four zero. Okay. Next up, old business, do we have any old business to discuss?
I was gonna bring up the library.
Okay.
Yeah, um, I just wanted to share, cause as, as, uh, I'd said last time, I think the community continues to be interested in this. I spoke with, uh, John, uh, yesterday and, uh, he shared that, um, he's meeting with, uh, or he has met with other municipalities that are in a similar situation as East Hemfield. I'm not sure West Hemfield has voted on this yet, but Mountville is in a similar situation as well as Manor Township. And so he shared that, um, he's working with all of those, including East Hemfield to, uh, you know, continue discussions. And also that, um, he's, or not he, but the library is working on policies as they reread policies about like how to, um, rent a meeting room and those kinds of things. They, um, agreed that there's some wording in there that's, um, complex or could be read different ways. So that they are working on updating their policies. And some, at some point, they will be on the website. So he, uh, shared that with me, but nothing definite, um, as far as, uh, resolving whether there will be donations or not. That's my report on it.
All right, thank you. Anything else for old business?
I would just add too, that I've had conversations with John as well and, um, yep, we're looking to move forward in some direction and the, I, library's in a, I think, investigative mode. And hopefully, um, maybe here in the near future, there'll be more to report.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to, um, new, new business, any new business? Hearing none. Let's go to public comment, any public comment for residents or taxpayers of East Hemfield Township?
There's none from Zoom.
None on Zoom. None here in the room. Okay, moving right along. Managers report, Mrs. Schweitzer.
I did want to announce that there was an executive session held tonight from six PM to six fifty regarding a legal matter with our attorney. In addition, we have Centerville Road, that project is simply moving forward. It is messy for, uh, vehicles, but i- it's moving along at, at a good rate. Uh, the Church Street, again, uh, very messy right now for people venturing on that roadway, but it is a project that's likely going to be completed within the next two weeks. They are now, uh, milling the road and doing a lot of, um, flagging back and forth. Uh, the other, the west side of the sidewalk has been installed. Uh, the east side was already done. Old Royce Town Road is on hold until the beginning of June. We talked about the Farmingdale project, we talked about Bar Boulevard. The amendments, Stony Battery Trail is almost finished. Public Works has done everything that they can possibly do, we're now waiting for the paving contractor to get that scheduled. Uh, the truck signage, the, uh, signage is in place. We have not heard any complaints from residents regarding truck traffic on that roadway. So, uh, we're assuming that those, those, that signage is working. The zoning hearing board's second meeting for the Culbrook validity challenge will be on Thursday, the sixteenth of May. The Route Seventy-two and Lititz Road temporary signals, I did receive the grant paperwork, it's been signed and submitted. Our highway occupancy permit, we're waiting for PennDOT to issue that, as soon as that's done, then our engineer can finalize his drawings and we can move forward on bidding that project. Hopefully this fall. We talked about Amos River Phase Two, the Humbert turf, the West Hemfield, uh, offer, investment of funds. Regarding the stormwater projects, the Harrisburg Pike drainage, uh, improvement project. I was a part of a meeting today with our en- our engineer. We are going to submit an application for the Growing Greener DEP grant, which is due in June for that project, they feel it's going to, uh, it fits into that project, uh, scope, that grant scope, so that's a positive. We were denied, uh, a grant from the SRBC recently, so we're, we're continuing to move forward and plug, plug that grant. Dorsey Drive, uh, the trees and the, and the center line of the pipe has been marked so that, um, and we have our attorney and engineer working on the easement documentation that needs to occur before we can get in there and do that work. Uh, we had two meeting group report outs, public safety met to discuss the truck route on Centerville Road and the MS Four Committee, which you received a summary, uh, sheet for that. We reviewed, uh, stormwater projects, we looked at potentially new projects because in fact, we're running out of our list. So we want to keep that generated so that we can continue to look for funding for those projects. And I did have a meeting, Diane and I had a meeting with, uh, Hemfield Recreation concerning a conceptual municipal parks department meeting. The Hemfield Rec desires to branch out from their physical building and providing services there to possibly looking at programming parks and providing recreation for the entire area. They currently have a contract with West Hemfield Township to do that as well as maintenance on their parks and they just wanted to play off of that with Mountville, East Hemfield and East Petersburg. So that was a very positive, you got their PowerPoint, they're in the early stages of that. So you'll probably be hearing more of that as we, the month move along. Lose my report unless there's questions.
On that, uh, municipal parks meeting, we'll, we'll discuss that at our meeting on Tuesday. That'll be part of our.
Weekend, sure.
Yeah, I like, I like that to be on the agenda, I've got some thoughts about that, uh, generally. On the Dorsey Drive Stormwater, um, we're not expecting, uh, any cost increases there, are we? Anticipating any?
The, uh, the quote that came out was like forty-one thousand and that was based on, uh, bidding the project. We feel that, uh, Public Works can do a lot of the work by the materials, uh, so we have to bring in a, a tree contractor and a, um, so no, in answer to your question.
All right.
We should be in budget.
On the zoning hearing board meeting, uh, scheduled for the May sixteenth, is that the, the second or third meeting we've had, that they've had?
Third, this will be the third.
This, this one will be the third, right?
And those will likely last until September, if not longer.
Right, and then, uh, quick question on tr- uh, truck signage, study signage. So we have one tra- one tr- truck route through the township, Centerville Road? And I thought Good Drive.
Good Drive is not posted, so that would be a truck route available, yes.
So the only, the only one posted right now is Centerville Road?
Centerville Road and Stony Battery.
And Stony Battery, that's right. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
Just an update I got this evening on the Church Street project, they anticipate as long as the weather holds that that project will be completed by May sixteenth. I know there's been several residents that have asked questions about that, so the current completion expectation date is hopefully May sixteenth.
Ahead of schedule. All right, well, thank you. Okay. Looks like we're at the end of the agenda, uh, do we have anything else from the board?
No.
Anything else for the good of the cause? All right, so let's adjourn the meeting at seven fifty. Thank you.